Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, February twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. Call the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda and any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, council, I don't have any additions or corrections for you.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who say nay? Motion carries. Uh, invocation. Crosswind Church. Good evening.
I think I'll do that. Dear God, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for this warm weather that we've been blessed with and thank you for each one here tonight, Father. Thank you for this town, this beautiful town we live in, Lord. We just pray for our leaders in this meeting and not only tonight, but in the weeks to come in this town, and we just give you all the glory in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. Next, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Recognizations of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anyone have anything tonight? All right, we do have a resolution underneath there. We have resolution number one. Motion accepting fourteen thousand dollars donated from the VFW Wolf six nine oh six for Hutchinson Police Department Rifle Squad. Squad rifles. There we go.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who say nay? Motion carries. Citizens addressing the council, just please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, approval in minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of February eleventh, two thousand twenty five.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve those minutes as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who say nay? Motion carries. Consent agenda, this will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh, A is approval of items for Dale Street Southwest, letting number one, project number twenty dash oh one. Uh, we have a resolution underneath there, uh, resolution number one, five, eight, three, three. Resolution declaring cost to be assessed and ordered in preparation for proposed assessments. And resolution number one, five, eight, three, four, resolution for hearing on proposed assessments. B is approval of resolution number one, five, eight, three, five. Resolution transferring funds to the two thousand twenty four construction fund, general fund and capital project fund. C is, uh, approval of resolution number one, five, three, six. Resolution transferring from the wastewater and capital project fund to the equipment replacement and airway construction funds. D is approval of purchase agreement with Midwest Industrial Two Grinding Incorporated, Smidkey. Uh, E is approval of accepting equipment grant and purchase flow for the Hutchinson Municipal Airport. Uh, F is approval of Reno and professional service agreement with Clark Environmental Mosquito Management Incorporated for twenty twenty five through twenty twenty eight. Uh, G is approval of use of service, uh, Fenske stump removal for ash tree removal program. H is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to the Hutchinson J C's on March eighth, two thousand twenty five at the McCloud County Fairgrounds. I has approval of issuing short-term gambling license to Hutchinson F F A alumni on March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five at the McCloud County Fairgrounds. J is approval of memorandum of agreement with L E L S Police Sergeants Union. Uh, K is appropriations, contract payments, uh, register A. Anything anybody wants pulled off?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve the consent, uh, agenda. A has presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who say nay? Motion carries. Uh, uh, claims appropriation, contract payments, register B. Chad, you have a check on there and my son has a check on there for his business, so we'll be abstaining.
Motion approved consent agenda two. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve, register B. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 With me and Chad abstaining. Motion carries.
That was a close one there.
I know.
Can I say one thing about that purchase?
Sure.
So, um, Lynn was able to get another grant to add three tricycles, like adult tricycles for the bike fleet. And one of them is like a handtrike, so if a kid's legs don't work, um, they can do the handtrike. And then we got a smaller trike and then a bigger trike, so then kids with balance can enjoy the bike rental program too, so it'd be a good deal.
Nice addition.
Yeah, it's awesome.
That's great. All righty, um, moving on, uh, composted right outreach and educational update.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. Um, I'm gonna give a quick update, obviously, on the compost rate campaign. Um, last time I was here presenting to you guys, it was last April. Um, and so I just wanna fill you in on what has been happening since. Um, this is just a whole nother timeline, but for, um, since April till now. Um, I'll go into each one of these a little bit more specifically, so I'll just breeze over this kinda quickly, um, but we put out, um...
Cassandra, could you just introduce yourself for those?
Yes, I'm so sorry.
Watching on TV that don't know who you are, so.
I'm sorry.
Everyone in this room knows who you are.
Yeah, yeah. Um, just trying to get everyone open to, um, so Cassandra Mifels, um, I'm the Outreach and Education Coordinator for Creekside Soils, um, the compost facility here, city-owned and operated. Um, and we have a campaign going on, composted right, um, to, uh, teach residents and educate, um, about our Creekside Organics Program. Um, what's compostable, what's not, um, and these are some ways that we're, we're trying to, um, reach and some of the initiatives that we're doing. Um, so we put an article out in the senior perspective, I'm not sure if you guys saw that, but it was actually really well-written. That was way back, uh, last April. Um, we've had a couple of youth group, youth groups come to Creekside to do tours. Um, I've been at the library to do storytimes to display there. Um, presented at, at a church back then. There's a lot more that are coming with churches, um, currently and into the future. Um, but we did one back then. Uh, we also did a Plaid to Garden compost sale, so you might have seen us at the, um, event center. Um, we were selling compost, but it was our compost, but it was sold and primarily bagged by, um, an organization, which was the Heart of Minnesota Animal Shelter. And they raised funds, um, for their organizations, so it was kind of a joint effort, um, coordinated it. But it was just to show residents that we, you know, what the material we make and how we make it with their Creekside material. Um, there was compost awareness week, or I'll, I'll get in a little bit more into that, but we did that. Um, and then, uh, we launched the new bag size and kitchen counter bins, um, at the May pickup bag pickup event, um, and that, we'll get, I'll obviously get more into that too. Um, we planted a garden at the, um, depot, um, which was supposed to be a demonstration. I'll also get more into that. That was at the farmer's market. Um, and also, uh, the, the Water Carnival Community Day for the J C's. Um, so just a lot of events that we're getting out in the community, talking to people, handing out information, um. We sent out a utility insert in July, I'm just letting people know that, hey, things are actually getting kind of better. Um, we are seeing some improvement, especially with using the new bags, um, but this is what you could do otherwise. Um, on top of it, which is, uh, follow us on our Facebook, so you can see the posts, um, our newsletter. Um, sign up for that to get all the new updates, um, and just participate, participate properly. And look up what, um, what items are accepted to do that correctly. Um, then I was on maternity leave for a bit, but I did not leave it, um, unattended, so I planned for that. And so our Facebook and our newsletter was still going, so communications were status quo. Um, there just wasn't a lot of on the, on the ground, boots-on-the-ground outreach, um, but went well pretty, went pretty well doing that, and then with my help from my team at Creekside, uh, we did maintain and track the garden growth and comparisons, which I'll get a little bit more into too. Um, and that was available at the farmer's market for a lot of people to see, so which was a, an educational piece in itself. Um, when I got back, I hit really hard into church outreach, and I did that because the one presentation I did back in April went so well. Um, it was meeting people where they were at, um, they're already going to church, and a lot of people came up to me afterwards, like, I had no idea, and this was really informative. Um, and I probably wouldn't have heard it otherwise, and you were here, so it was, it was off of convenience, so I wanted to get more involved with churches. Uh, we had another compost bag pickup, I'll talk about that a little bit more too, in November, which we educated each one of those. Um, December with holidays and everything, there's a lot of educational content creation, um, reaching out to Ridgewater to get more involved with the college. Um, and then in January, we did our first community partner influencer meeting, um, and this is just leaders within the community I wanted to get together so that we could collaborate and come up with more ideas, um, how to push the messaging out there. Um, not just solely me. And, uh, and then I did a Hema partnership, which was actually one of the pastors here that was just, um, that just did the prayer. Um, he was new to town and he was part of this, um, the Hemas, all the pastors that, that come together and meet. Um, and I, I spoke with them and did a presentation and gave out all the information, and that's gonna be an awesome partnership down the road. Uh, but he was, one of those pastors was new, and he moved to town, he was handed an organics cart and didn't know quite how to use it, so now he's doing it properly, so that was a win-win for that, um, but I think that happens quite often, and so we just need to get a little bit more into how do we reach those, those new residents as well, as along with the ones that are, that are already residing here for a while. Um, and then coming up, I'll touch on that later, but there's a bunch more coming up. Um, to get more specifically into the compost bag and, and bin pickup, um, it went really well. Um, about seven hundred and seventy-nine people attended to pick up their bags. Um, out of those, seven hundred and seventy-nine, seven hundred and thirty-nine of them, this is about approximate, we are having volunteers help with this event, um, wanted a bin. So those are up, employed out there, um, hopefully people are using them properly. Um, and then at the next pickup, we had five hundred and seventy-seven attend, which that wasn't a decline, I don't think, in participation. It might have been slightly, just because they're like, oh, I'm not getting this giant bag anymore, and I was using this for garbage. Um, but quite a few people since then have picked up at the, at the city center as well. Um, so you'll see a little bit drop in that because they know it's conveniently, they can pick up at the city center sometimes, so. Um, and, and that pickup, we handed out another hundred and twenty bins, so about eight hundred and sixty are floating out there. Um, people are using them in their households, um, and I plan on making a few videos in people's actual homes to show how they have that set up and how they're collecting properly. Um, the feedback from this was pretty, pretty good. It actually got some residents into collecting food scraps that were, that weren't already, um, but there were.
I was one of them.
Matt was one of them, he can attest, um, but there are, there was some pushback, um, and what I've heard from people is that they wanted to be fair. Um, and they, some really liked the bigger bags, um. So, to attest to that, if anyone's watching and wondering why we switched, there were, there's lots of different reasons, and it wasn't, it wasn't financial, we're not trying to, to um, cut down on pennies or anything like that. It, it was primarily to make it more convenient to collect food scraps and not waste the bag. So many people were having a hard time filling their bags, um, before they had to be taken out, um, because food scraps tend to smell a little bit in the house, so the more frequently you take it out, the better, um, the bin, the kitchen, but get, the kitchen bin is supposed to make things more, um, convenient, and so we switched that size. The, if you really want larger bags, we don't wanna make it harder for residents that are, um, collecting a lot of food scraps and are doing it properly, so we will, this next spring, be supplying large bags again, but for purchase. Um, that'll be three dollars a roll, which is the cheapest you can find it. We're just selling them at cost. Um, since then, we have done an audit, um, since introducing the smaller bags. Um, contamination, we're still seeing it. I will say a lot of it has switched from lesser recyclables that are hard no-no's and more um, people not understanding that we want people, or that you need to recycle cardboard, that we don't accept cardboard with all the tape and the labels and the stickers. Um, and so there's a lot, there is still, we're still receiving a lot of cardboard, um, but the, the win from this is, is we have seen, um, a percentage increase of food scraps. Um, these audits are not perfect, you know, we, we are doing this by hand. Um, but it is, it is significant enough that you can tell that people are using those smaller bags quite a bit more. Um, I touched on compost awareness week last year, which we'll be doing again, but I just wanted to mention that we did like a, a week-long giveaway on our Facebook. Um, so it, it brought awareness to some local businesses and to ourselves and what we're trying, our messaging that we're trying to put out there. Um, and I was trying to get more people to join our Facebook so that they see our informational posts. Um, about eighty people from that week, um, fought, started following us, and there was a lot of engagement, so plan on doing something like it again, um, but slightly different, um, just to raise more weight, um, engagement on our social media platforms. Um, we did a Plaid to Garden fundraiser, which I mentioned before, uh, I just wanna touch a little bit more on this. We sold two hundred and forty-seven bags of Creekside Soil Compost. Um, like I said, the proceeds minus, um, you know, the cost of the bag, um, went to the Heart of Minnesota Animal Shelter, um, and I got to talk to over fifty residents just about the organics program, which was great, and it got, you know, some conversations going with people that didn't know that we actually do this. Uh, we will be continuing this event, and this year it'll be April twenty-sixth, um, ten AM to two PM at the event center parking lot. Um, I kinda teamed up a little bit with, uh, Public Works, and, uh, they'll be selling the rain barrels there, same time, same place. Um, so you can do it all in, in one, in one day. Um, to touch on the garden that we planted, which we're doing again this year, um, there was two plots. I think when I presented last, um, this was just, we had an idea of what this was gonna look like, but we hadn't done it yet. Um, this was planted back in May, previous May, and we planted chai's basil, oregano, I mean, you can read all those, but we did two different plots. Um, and one side had compost amended soil and one side did not, and then we monitored the two sides, just to kinda show the, the benefits of using compost within, um, a garden and your soil. Um, the total produce that we, um, grew, grew was a hundred and forty-one pounds. The compost amended was around seventy-eight, and the non-compost side was around sixty-three. You can tell that the compost side, um, did do better. Um, that soil there isn't, isn't terrible to begin with, which is great, um, so you're not gonna see it's, it's a huge gap, but it did kinda prove our point. And there's a lot of visuals we got too as well, that that side did, did do better. Um, from the total produce that we grew, we, um, donated sixty-two pounds of it to the food shelf, which was great, and we plan to do a lot more this year. The reason why there's such a huge gap there is there were some really weird watermelons that grew. And we didn't really just wanna give them to people, because we're like, I don't know if these are good or not. Um, some weird watermelons and then a couple pumpkins I did keep for myself. Not gonna lie, Halloween's my favorite, and we put in some work, so um, that's that gap you'll see in, um, pounds there. Um, I did wanna touch on some of the stuff we, I planned and put together so that it wasn't just a huge gap while I was on leave, um, but just some, some graphics that are super simple with pictures, barely any words. Um, you know, this was goes in these carts, this was goes in this cart, you know, I have to, um, not only focus on organics, um, but also recycling because we are receiving recycling when we should not be, I just want people to know where they should put that material, when it, it should not go in your organics cart. Um, last time I presented, I talked about how we did cart checks. Uh, we are gonna do that again this year, um, to have a comparison from last year to this year. Um, I plan to do it around the late April-ish time, leading, the weeks leading up to and after, um, Earth Day, so hopefully we can get people excited, hey, let's do, let's do our part, let's compost it right. Um, so we'll put some messaging out there, and then, um, we'll go around and check carts again and see, see how we did. Um, since then too, we've also made this really quick guide, um. You know, a lot of people were asking, okay, if I can't put it in my organics cart, where can I put it then? Um, and, you know, you have separate guides for organics and then recycling, um, so I just decided to combine something for a really quick, put in their house. Quite a few people said, um, they laminated it and put it next to their carts, so hopefully it's a quick guide they can just reference. Um, this past fall as well, we kinda launched, or put it out there more so that we offer facility tours. Um, so we have quite a few of those on deck, um, s- small, small groups that are like within teams, that they're doing team building, they just wanna learn what our facility does, and then also, um, big groups of kids, um, that are coming to learn, you know, what, what happens there as well. Lastly, I just kinda wanna touch on what's planned coming up. That's kind of what's happened since, and what I, what we kinda want to, um, move forward with. Like I said, I want, we're gonna do the Plaid to Garden fundraiser again, um. Also kinda wanna put together some waste workshops, um, this will be kind of about how do you source that rate? Where do you, I know it sounds like a boring topic, um, but, you know, where does your waste go? And not only like which cart does it go into, but also what happens to where it's taken to? What happens when it gets to Creekside? What happens when it gets to the transfer, transfer station for McCloud County and their, um, recycling center? Where does it go after that? Why are some things recycled, why things, some things are not, um, and why think some things have to just go in the trash? Um, so gonna work on that. There's quite a few church services that I'm gonna try to present at, and we'll do compost awareness week again. Um, also some short, um, videos within people's households, um. Also talk to some people about through, in, working for Three M. Um, Three M has, I mean, is, is a huge company within Hutchinson, so quite a few people, quite a few residents work there. Um, so I'm gonna try to be at one of their events as well. I'll be at the farmer's market again, more facility tours, um, the Carver County Fair. Forgot to put in there the Garlic Festival. We're actually pairing up to how to make, manage their compostables since they collect compostables and bring it to our facility, how to make that smoother, better, be able to track how, the, the tonnage of that as well. Um, also commercial organics pilots, this is, this is just an idea right now, but it's, it's a goal for my, for this year. Um, is to get a few not residential accounts, um, within, within the community, um, and see how it goes, work out the kinks. Um, it could be a restaurant, coffee shop, um, I don't know if we're gonna do as big as else, at the school system, but we're gonna pick a few commercial accounts and, um, and get them set up, uh, with service and how to do it properly and just kinda see how that would work for when we do want to expand. Um, also, we touched, um, in the works is organizational-wide organics collection, meaning within the city, all the facilities would be collecting organics as well, within, at least within their break rooms, um, so that we are actually diverting um, that organic waste, um, as a city, as an organization, just kinda lead by example. We also have, um, an open house that we're planning for Creekside, uh, which will have tour, um, equipment demos, um, hopefully some fun and activities for some kiddos. And, uh, just get people more in touch with what we're, what we're doing at Creekside. Um, I did add in this last slide, just so you have a little bit more visuals. Um, and in order to be diverting food scraps at work, um, we'll need proper containers, we need proper signage. Um, and I guess, the reason I bring this up, even though it hasn't been brought to its fruition yet, is just that support from council would be great if this is initiative that you think could go well. Um, and, and leading, you guys are the leaders of the city, so, so leading that way would be, would be really helpful to, uh, to implement this initiative. And that's all I got. Thanks, guys.
Got a couple questions for you.
Yes.
You talked about cardboard, so cardboard should be free of staples, tape, stickers?
Yes, so cardboard should just be recycled. At the end of the day, um, if you really, really, really wanted to take a box and take off all those things and put them in your organics, will it eventually break down? Will it break down our process? Yes, but we don't really, it has a much better life if it just gets recycled. You don't have to do any of that then, you don't have to remove the tape, you don't have to do anything, it can be recycled just as is. I think it should just be a rule of thumb that people understand that cardboard is recyclable, should go in the recycling, doesn't need to be going in your organics. When your organics is for food scraps, food soil paper, and yard waste.
All right, second question.
Yeah.
I think Tim brought it up a few weeks ago, or meetings ago, uh, animal waste.
Yeah.
Uh, goes in the garbage, correct?
What was that?
Does it go garbage, or does it?
Yes, I mean, I, I wanna be like, to me, I'm like, oh, try to use it as mu- you know, try to use it if you can, like in your garden, or, I mean, kind of. Um, or, uh, you know, on your property, you could, you could dispose of it that way, but yes, if you're thinking of a cart where it should go, it should go in your garbage, yes.
I think that it was brought up about dog waste, right?
Yeah.
Well, and dog waste, and, and now we're talking other things, and but I, I know I talked to extension services about that a little bit, and they'd prefer not to have any waste put on gardens, because if it's not composted correctly, you could
That's very true.
You could have E. coli, an E. coli issue. Uh, I've probably had too much education to speak on this.
No, no, and you're, you're completely right, I mean, you can choose what you wanna do on your property, but
Yes.
Honestly, I would put it in the trash, yes.
In fact, I came home on Friday night, my wife bought a new desk and one of those treadmill things that you hang clothes on, and
You said that all
The boxes were sticking out and big, long boxes, and I went in and said, what are we doing here? And she said, well, aren't we supposed to put it in there? I said, we have to break it down. And I said, I bet you a hundred dollars you left the card, uh, the styrofoam in it and the plastic. And she's, what is that wrong? And I said, well, that's a bit, no, no, I'm gonna call Cassandra and tell on you. I am still married, uh, but it's just the whole learning process, and we can correct each other. And, and it, like I told her, when you do that, you do it correctly. Your taxes are benefited from this, so let's put it into a cash basis, uh, cause now you can afford the treadmill. Uh, but it's also the whole point of just, we can teach each other, and there's no reason to criticize someone to do it, it's just, let's get it right.
Right.
It, it benefits the environment.
Every time that I talk in front of a group of people, I say, this is confusing to most. I talk like it's like, oh, it's willy-nilly, you know, it's like, do this, don't do that, um, but it is actually very confusing for most when they're standing in front of bins or carts and be like, oh, where should I put it, um, and why? So it, it can be intimidating, and I think that it should just not be a taboo thing to talk about, that we can all just be like, all right, this goes here, and this is why. And that's another reason for like waste workshops, where people are understanding like, why you can't put plastic film in with recyclables, you know, what, what's happening to that, that material once it gets there. Um, so people understand the process and actually what, you know, things are made out of, and what will happen to their end life.
You know, my son gets five dollars every week, cause we put all the boxes in one area, and he pulls off all the labels and stickers and cuts them up, and then we give him part of his allowance for that, so.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Cassandra.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on, uh, resolution number one, five, eight, three, seven, resolution closing the two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four construction fund to the police authority construction fund.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Uh, yeah, let me pull up, I just have some bullet points to help here. All right, so this first agenda item, typically I place it on the consent agenda, cause it's usually a no-brainer, we're closing our construction funds into a debt service funds, that, that's our typical, uh, process. However, um, instead of in addition to being able to transfer surplus construction funds into the debt fund, we can also transfer those monies into another construction fund that may have a deficit. In fact, we did it with two minor surpluses last year within the construction funds. The reason why I put it as new business today for you is because I'm proposing transferring this total surplus of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand and, and four hundred and thirty-six dollars transferring into, into the police facility construction fund as opposed to the debt service funds. At the end of two thousand twenty-four, our police facility construction fund has a deficit currently of over nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, uh, that's dollars, um, so we need to fund that deficit and close that construction fund in two thousand twenty-four since the police facility is complete. So finance staff is recommending transferring these monies, uh, surplus monies into that police facility construction fund, which will lessen the burden on our community improvement fund, which is the eventual source of funding that cash deficit within Source of funding that cash deficit within our police facility fund. Um, so at this point, uh, all the costs and funding have been incurred within these two construction funds. There's nothing outstanding. They do need to be closed at the end of two thousand twenty-four, so we need to figure out where these monies are going. As I said, staff is recommending that these funds go to the police facility improvement fund. And with that said, I'll open it up to any questions or comments you have. And then ultimately I'm, I'm looking for you to approve this resolution, transferring the surplus funds into the police facility construction fund.
I have a quick question. Uh, the sale of the old police station? The funds for that, did that go to this also or?
That's the next resolution.
That'll be on our next resolution. I'll show you the detail.
I had read that.
Yeah, I provided a lot more detail in the agenda with my memo, um, but we'll go through that in summary form here on the next slide. So this is just simply dealing with these two construction funds, transferring the surplus monies to the police construction fund.
Can we handle these as one?
Uh, I have two resolutions, so the first one hint.
If you wanted to do both resolutions in a, in a, I'm sorry, go ahead, Andy.
I was going to say, uh, what you decide here ultimately affects what we decide on the next resolution.
That's, I think the answer I was looking for in a, in a roundabout ask.
So Andy, what the, the twenty-three construction and twenty-four, what projects were those? Were those both the police station?
Uh, no, no, none of these involve the police station. These are our roadway projects. Uh, I should have maybe prefaced with, with our roadway projects, we establish a construction fund to account for all the costs and all the funding sources. And we also establish a debt service fund to pay for the debt that we issue on those improvements. So this is strictly roadway improvement projects. And that two thousand twenty-three, that, that larger surplus is. I think it's attributed to the Jefferson Street project that was delayed. It was originally supposed to be in twenty-three, delayed to twenty-four. We ended up using more municipal state aid for that tw- our twenty-three projects, not knowing if that Jefferson Street cost would grow on us. In the, in the, in the delay, so that's why that's a little larger than normal. Do you recall the actual projects, Mike, that we did in twenty-three and twenty-four?
Roberts was the main one twenty-three. Um, by Golds running out to sure towards. That was last year with our department, Michael Court, um.
Well, Washington.
Yep, Washington and, um.
I think golf, golf course road would have been in twenty twenty-three too, or was that school road?
Uh, golf course and Century were the overlay projects that we did in twenty-three.
Yeah, sorry, I should have had those numbers here for you. Any other questions?
Motion to approve this resolution.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat, approve resolution number one, five, eight, three, seven. Any other discussion? Poll in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you say nay, motion carries. Uh, right, resolution number one, five, eight, three, eight, resolution. Transferring from the community improvement funds to the police facility construction fund.
Okay, so now we're going to talk police construction. The last slide was roadway. This is. All costs related to building our police facility. And that top, top section, uh, gives you a summary of our costs and funding. I provided more detail in, in the packet, but this is just, I just want to focus on summary and then we can answer any detailed questions if you have them, but. Our total costs exceeded our total funding by nine hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars. And then in that last resolution, you just approved transferring those surplus funds from the two construction funds. That reduces our total deficit within this police facility construction fund. To a, a net amount of seven hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-one. So that now is the amount we need to fund. And the community improvement fund is the appropriate source to fund that deficit. So as you mentioned, Tim, yes, we did sell the old PD and the old DOC in two thousand twenty-four and the net proceeds from that. Those two sales was two, five hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars. So. With this resolution to transfer monies out of the community improvement fund. Majority of that represents the proceeds from the sale of the PD and, and the EOC. And then the remainder. Hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. That is what is needed to fund the remaining deficit out of community improvement fund balance. And just on a side note, we still need to submit our sales tax rebate to the state. Uh, that rebate is on construction materials. It was delayed since there was some, there was some delay in the project last year. I think we still have a little bit of technology, uh, contract to, to finish here in two thousand twenty-five, so. I waited on submitting that, that rebate, but we're looking at two hundred thousand plus, maybe two hundred twenty-five thousand. Uh, to receive back from the state on that sales tax rebate. And then that, when we receive it, would simply come back into the community improvement fund and reimburse monies that we're using to address. This deficit.
I think one thing to acknowledge with the council, or at least I'm trying to think, maybe half of you are here. Um, we had seven hundred thousand dollars in soils correction, so when you look at that. You know, why were we over budget by nine hundred some thousand? Seven hundred thousand was for that soils issue that we found.
Yes, in the.
Yeah, that was, that was our, I think all our contingency money that we had set aside was found within that, that soils issue, which was. The frustrating thing was even did soil borings and still didn't find that until we got in there and started digging, so. That was the, the big thing on why that was, um, you know, so much over. It's, it's interesting because they hear a lot of other rumors out in the community that's just. Aren't, aren't accurate. I think many people remember the sidewalk that had to be replaced. That was covered by the contractor. That was not a cost covered by the. By the city, but you know, it causes good fodder throughout the, the community, so.
I'm glad you're giving this great report because I told people that blotch tonight.
Well, if you remember, there was a gentleman at the truth and taxation meeting in December who, who just made a comment that this project came in way over budget. But he didn't really have any context or anything to really compare that to. So. In your packet, I put together that memo just speaking to the actual costs, but tonight I wanted to show you what our, our budget or expected. Costs and funding were in advance of the project. So the top shows our project costs. Uh, the base bid column shows what our contractor bids were, just over ten point seven million. And then construction management architect costs. And then that two point eight million are the costs that the city was directly responsible for. And that includes actually purchasing the property and, and some other work. So in total, we were expecting fourteen point seven million in total costs. We came in higher than fourteen point nine million in costs, so just about two hundred fifteen thousand dollars over budget. And as Matt said, you can see in, in the red, we were eight hundred and twenty thousand over budget in our contractor costs. And the majority of that is related to the soil conditions. You can see in the middle of this sheet, I have the change orders. We executed a hundred and twenty-six change orders for a total of just under eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And the majority of that, almost five hundred and fifty-four thousand was related to soil conditions.
Yeah, so I was incorrect.
Close enough. Uh, the funding sources at the bottom, you can see our, our budget tied exactly to our, our construction costs up above. Fourteen point seven million. And again, our funding sources came in over budget, uh, by that same amount, two hundred fourteen thousand, nine eighty-two. Couple items to point out, the council, back in two thousand nineteen, I think it was, approved three, three million of community improvement dollars. To go towards this project. And I know we've spoke to this, uh, in the past, but. Instead of using that full amount to be applied towards construction costs, we used nine hundred and fifty-four thousand of it. To pay off old debt that had higher interest rates. And then that allowed us to issue more debt for the police facility at lower interest rates. So that's why you're seeing more debt issued than we had planned. And less of those community improvement dollars used than we had planned. And then there you can see again, the. Proceeds from the PD and the EOC that are going to be coming in here pending you approving this transfer. Construction fund surpluses. And then we did have some minor interest earnings, actually sixty thousand of interest earnings. On those bond proceeds as they sat in this fund before they were utilized.
So really we were over by about two hundred and fourteen thousand and we still. If I don't, if I'm reading this right, Andy, that doesn't include the two hundred thousand that we could get in sales tax reimbursement, or is that in those numbers?
Um, well, it's, it's baked in somewhat. It was just essentially reimbursing the community improvement. For dollars that we're fronting right now.
Sure.
And since we're talking about using community improvement dollars, uh, to fund this deficit, I thought I, I should show you. The two main funds that we use for projects, community improvement fund and the capital projects fund. And these are. Unrestricted reserve funds at the end of two thousand twenty-four that are available for the council to use at your discretion. And just to note that community improvement fund total of two million sixty thousand, that is after. Any funding you approve tonight to address the deficit. Um, so in total, we have just under four point five million of unrestricted funds. I do want to note though, community improvement fund, we do have a five-year CIP item out there for a campground expansion, five hundred thousand. That's currently in our plan for two thousand twenty-six. It's not formally approved. Um, but if that project does go forward, we'd have to find a funding source, whether it's. Hundred percent community improvement fund, capital projects fund combination. Uh, but the one thing I do want to point out with the community improvement fund as well is it relies on our retired debt service funds for revenue. So when a debt service fund is done, ready to close, all the obligations are complete. Any surplus is transferred into the community improvement fund and then that just adds to our balance. Well, we're not going to be closing a debt service fund until two thousand thirty because we just paid off four or five. Uh, debt issuance is early as part of this project, so unfortunately that's. That's the negative of paying off those debt funds, I guess, is we're not going to see revenue coming into the community improvement fund. Capital projects fund similar has a five-year CIP with projects totaling seven hundred thirty-one thousand. The ladder truck is, uh, the, the majority of that, which is currently showing four hundred thousand. Being paid out of the capital projects fund in two thousand twenty-five here, but that, that final funding of that ladder truck still needs to come. There will be discussion on that. Uh, but with the capital projects fund, uh, compared to the community improvement fund, we do have an annual funding source. Which is LGA. So each year, there's approximately two hundred, two thousand of undesigned LGA. Going into the capital projects fund that will help grow the capital projects fund balance, uh, throughout the years. And I think that's all I had for you, so I'd open it up for questions, comments, and then ultimately seeking your approval. For transferring the monies out of the community improvement fund.
The one comment I will make is that's one of the reasons that, you know, this is well before my time that these funds were established. Was for specific community projects that council felt was for the overall improvement. That's why it's called the community improvement fund. Of the community. And so this type of project fits right into, into the, the basis for those, those funds. When you're looking at that roughly four point five million dollars.
Andy, can you tell the public what LGA is?
Local government aid, so I believe we're receiving three point one million dollars annually. Half of that we're using within the general fund to help fund our general services, police, fire, um, park and rec. The other fifty percent is going into this capital projects fund to fund our facility plan. So when we need to do facility upgrades or, uh, repairs, improvement projects, we're using those monies. Uh, it's also funding playground replacements. It's funding miscellaneous infrastructure maintenance. And then it's also, uh, fifty thousand of it is being used to fund fleet replacements. So fifty percent of our LGA being used more for capital projects.
Any other questions for Andy?
Have we heard anything from the legislature on the sales tax moving forward?
Nothing.
Nothing on that?
Nothing.
Okay, I'm just kind of putting that out there because it's a future concern that we're going to have. And then on this building, that's budgeted totally different, didn't come out of CIP?
Correct. Or it's, uh, it's there, well, we haven't, uh, we haven't established a number necessary for this building. Um, but it would come out of our facilities fund if we were to do any, if we were to do any.
Okay, the facility, but that's on the facility side of the CIP.
Yes, yes.
And just to designate, uh, our facility plan focuses on our general fund facilities, not our enterprise fund facilities. So water, sewer, liquor store, compost, they fund all their facility and improvements out of their fund balance.
And we still have to decide on the fire truck if we're taking, uh, if we're borrowing from ourselves for that or if we're going out of this one.
Correct.
Okay, just so it's clear. Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution.
Sir. Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve resolution number one, five, eight, three, eight. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you say nay, motion carries. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Uh, we have, uh, minutes, uh, city of Hutchinson financial report and investment report. For January of two thousand twenty-five. Chief Jefferson, you got anything for us tonight?
Mayor and council, uh, just wanted to report, uh, we, last weekend, or last Wednesday. We had our graduation for our citizens' police academy. Um, we had ten students this year, so I'm putting it out there. Keep your eye on the paper, on our Facebook page. We'll be ho- hosting again in December, more than likely. Uh, we'd like to be able to double the amount of students we have, so, um, again, just keep, keep an eye out. And I guess I would extend the invitation to any one of you, if you wanted to go through, it is actually a pretty informative program that we do. And it's, uh, we've narrowed it to seven weeks instead of the traditional ten. To try to be a little bit more respectful of people's time, but it's three hours, once a week for seven weeks.
For our discussion, uh, give a little pitch for some, uh, bike police.
Uh, uh, yeah, we'll again be looking for park patrol, uh, this spring, uh, so. Usually we look for either someone who is just graduating or going into their senior year of high school or older. Um, preferably, um, somebody that has an interest in the law enforcement field, but that's not required. Um, and a willingness to put on a lot of miles on a bicycle.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Skidding. Um, Kelly, you have anything for us? Andy?
I'm not, nothing.
Mike? Donovan?
Good.
Andy, you were done talking? You talked out?
I'm done. Unless you have something else you need.
Nope, that's good. Mark, you got anything for us tonight?
Nothing tonight.
Uh, Dave, let's start with you.
Well, we had a subcommittee on, from the MMDC, uh, today, uh, virtual. Not virtual, what do you want to call it? Zoom meeting. And, uh, again, it's, that's a lot of transportation. And, uh, the agent, and, uh, right now, uh. They're still concentrating really hard to try and find that transportation for people that are. Needing it when they need it and not when someone supplies it, so. Uh, it's a tough road to hold, but, uh, someone will make, you know, it somewhere, so. Volunteer drivers, we know we have a lot of volunteers for DAV probably for the, uh. It was office, uh, over in Glencoe and that type of thing, uh, but, uh, we're still looking for those volunteers that. Are willing to drive and take people places and that type of thing. I ran into a situation about two weeks ago where a guy is in Harm, uh, Army, Army River. And, uh, he wants to go to the casino, but he has issues. So he needs the help of getting in and out of a car and that type of thing. And, uh. I explored all I could and couldn't find anybody that would be susceptible to that because they can drive, but they don't have the skills to, uh. Help that person, like in an auto car or bathrooms or whatever the case may be, so. Uh, a lot of holes to fill and generally we as, that are mobile, don't really realize all those. Handicaps that people have, uh, that are challenged, so. Now it's working on it, but it, it's a slow process, so then we'll have to see what, uh, president administration does with funding as to whether or not we get, uh. Some funding to continue to do some things, uh. as to whether or not we get, uh, some funding to continue to do some things, uh, other than that. Why, it's a good, uh, it's a good project to be involved in. So I'm just, uh, you know, you can call me anytime you want to and we can discuss it and that type of thing. But you just got to have a real keen interest in it and, uh, be able to have that ability to make somebody mobile that isn't mobile, so.
All righty, thanks, Dave. Pat?
Nothing.
Pat?
Nothing extra.
Timmy?
Uh, well, library board met, I was, uh, missed the meeting, but I was able to go through the minutes. They're planning for their summer events, of course, in the park. And, uh, they're open now, uh, fully open with the flooring re, redone and some adjustments there. I know in April, they're planning a outer space kind of, uh, space theme. So the books and everything will be relegated around that. And, uh, I guess I'm going to bring it up here just so we're forewarned that there's, uh, citizens who are looking at reopening the discussion about chickens in town and doing some background research. And, and I think we'll bring that forward and discuss that with the city administrator, uh, and with the council as we move forward. And, uh, it's, it's a large group of people who are pushing for it. So I think, uh, we need to reopen that and take a look at that. Now, also just to the chief understanding, I haven't talked to chief about this. We've had an organization, uh, they do a training and it's done, it's a nationwide, nationwide training, uh, called AVP, which is alternative violence program. And they've offered to come to Hutchinson and do a free training. It's a three-day event, so there's multiple hours. But it, it, I've gone through it, even though I'm not a violent person, but there were some things that I realized about myself internally. Uh, so we, we looked at our mental health in our community survey. And I think it had a thirty-three percent that our community was like thirty-three, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but around thirty-three percent. And so I've been reaching out to organizations like To Be Continued to offer more services in our community and, and trainings and that kind of thing to recognize either suicide or violence or domestic violence. Uh, and this group volunteered to come in. This is a very expensive course to take, uh, but they'll be offering it free here in Hutchinson. So we'll have information out about that soon. And I hope to talk to chief about that as we move forward.
There it is.
That's it.
Thank you. Matt?
Um, one thing I'll add is that we've, uh, begun working on the space needs study for the city center building. We've got some visioning sessions coming up with those that are housed here. And if any council members are interested in, in participating in that, just, uh, please let me know. So otherwise that's it for me, so.
Well, I had all my meetings this, last week. And, uh, Hutchinson, uh, HRA Hutchinson Housing Development. We, um, just talked about, uh, park towers and, because we take care of that. And so there are some vacancies there at park towers. Um, did the housing report, uh, last month, uh, this would be December. We had, uh, thirty houses on the market in Hutchinson, uh, as of December. Had resource allocation meeting. Chad, you forgot about that one. We should tag off, you should, you have to do it next time, so. Okay, so we just talked about the twenty-five, uh, twenty-twenty-five projects, uh, the street projects that we got up, coming up, Dale Street, Hassan, Franklin site and improvement, the landing. So had a little update from, uh, Lynn, uh, from the parks and recs update. So then, um, had airport commission meeting. Just talked about, uh, uh, we have two open side hangars, uh, that are open for people to rent. And, uh, that's about it for that. So we're going to go in.
May I just, one, one comment I do want to make regarding, I know there's been a lot more communication. Apparently out in public on chickens, I can say we've actually had no phone calls here.
About that, I'm sorry, yeah.
We've had no phone calls here at city center, which is, it's always interesting when I hear all this conversation going on in public and nobody's calling us, so. We took one, I'm sorry, we just, we did have, we did have one asking more or less for a copy of the minutes when there was a discussion on it.
Yeah, Tim brought it up, I'm sorry, I should have brought it up too because I had a gentleman stop into the shop and talk to me about it. And, uh, I said that, uh, we'd probably look into it and so.
So I think the question I have for the council, you know, is this a, a council meeting discussion? Is this a, a workshop type of discussion? What, what's, where's the route you'd like to, to go with it? You know, I've, I sent a bunch of information out to you based off of the last time we had this conversation. And so if there's really any direction from you guys on any more information, I just kind of need to know that so we can look into it.
I think where a lot of this comes from is, and I am on Facebook, but, and Tim, I don't know where, you, you always talk to a lot of people, but Facebook has real life in Hutchinson. The stuff that is stated on there is off the charts ridiculous. I'm sorry, I'm taking a strong stand on this. Because I too have done some research into this. And when you said there's a lot of people, I don't know if you mean a lot of people like in. On there it said, we've got a hundred and fifteen cert, uh, petitions signed or whatever. If this, this is my own opinion, if they want to get this, something that's done, that's put to the city instead of just the council, I would suggest you go after the back election. I think you have to get twenty-five percent of the voters to get it put on for some type of vote. And I welcome them to come to us, but the talk on real life in Hutchinson was there was going to be people here tonight. So I was fully expecting that. And I don't know where they are.
Well, I, I know they didn't come because there's, it was going to be, I was going to discuss it on the light side if we move it forward. Uh, I still believe we should move it forward. Uh, if there's a, a group or a working group that comes together, I'd be open to that idea. I did get a copy of the petition that they sent to me. Uh, they do have signatures and there's a push for it and.
You mean like twenty signatures, a hundred signatures?
No, it had a hundred and fifty-three signatures on it.
Because I saw like, again, I'll go back to real life and there's people on there from the metro area saying we, Hutchinson should have chickens.
And they have a leader in town and they have a person who's, a group that they've put together.
I'm not saying no, I'm just saying so much stuff is said on that website where people can do it anonymously. They're not going to be honest, it bugs me some. So I guess the question is back, I appreciate that for you. Do we want to have a workshop on it? You know, is, or, or is there a, a discussion at, at a council level type of meeting? I guess that's the direction I'm looking for.
Just do a discussion within our council.
Okay.
Agenda.
Okay.
I know when, when the guy did come in and talk to me and, and my feeling, I, I was raised on a farm, yes. I took care of chickens, I picked eggs, I did that. Like I told him, I said, from a person that had chickens growing up, you understand what it takes to have chickens. So all of a sudden you have somebody that's never been on a farm and thinks, oh, you know, it's kind of like, let's go buy a bunny for Easter, you know? Then what do you do with the bunny? All of a sudden we got bunnies running all over. But, you know, and when he came in, I told him, I said, personally, I'd like, like to have maybe some that they would have to watch of, something to, you know, educational piece.
And I talked to egg extension and they're willing to put that together. And so, I mean, I'm just doing some research because I didn't know, I knew years ago it had been discussed. But then I grew up on a farm, so I understand chickens. And, and it's interesting because we've talked to other, I've talked to other communities and they don't have that many people because it's the initial startup cost and the time and the length. I mean, I understand you go to the, the store right now and buy eggs and they're eight dollars or four dollars or whatever it is. The investment into a coop, the invest, recouping that investment, if I could use that pun a little bit, uh, but recouping that investment for some eggs. Last week it was what, thirty below out? Go clean out a chicken pen, keep the water unfrozen, feed the chickens when it's thirty below. Yeah, this farm boy isn't doing that anymore. But if, if people feel that way and we can put up a system, uh, where it's a permitted and cared for system, I know Glencoe has it and, you know, a lot of other communities are allowing it.
I saw where there was, at least that are, where you can look it up, there's like fifty-seven communities in the state that allow chickens. It's, uh, I'm not posting them coming. I, I honestly thought, again, as I go reference that, that website, that everybody was so in favor. I was sure we'd see them here.
Well, like I told them, there won't be a go-kart track, so.
Oh, let's put it on an agenda.
And I think just for maybe those who may be watching or listening, um, as you guys know, I won't be here for our next meeting. So we'll probably look to do it, maybe that second meeting in March, we'll have a discussion on it. So I would encourage, you know, you know, research from the council. I said, we've sent, staff has sent you stuff, if you want more, let me know. We can try to do our best to track that down. And I guess if the, the public has a strong, um, interest in this, they should be reaching out to their elected officials.
Yeah, they should be reaching out.
So.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Matt, for reminding me to bring that out. So, um, we're going to go into closed session here. So, uh, the purpose of this workshop is to conduct a closed session to develop or consider an offer for purchase of real estate property located at twelve Michigan Street Northeast in Hut, the City of Hutchinson under Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three C. Now I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to, so discuss possible purchase of real estate of Michigan Street, more or less east.
So, second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave, or Tim? Dave?
Yeah, Tim.
Tim?
Tim, Dave.
To go in the closed session to discuss the possibility, possibility of purchase of real estate. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion carries.